18, 2021, and ask County Manager Maul if there are any adjustments to the agenda.
We do have one adjustment, Chairman Mallory, and that's the removal of economic development under closed session.
Do any commissioners have any adjustments to the agenda? Is there any new business or unfinished business anticipated?
Continuing any discussion from the budget retreat on any of that, any of those topics tonight?
I think that would be appropriate under unfinished business since we were. County Manager can update us on a few of those items.
I have a few under County Manager's report, but if we want to do it under unfinished business, we can do that as well.
Yeah, okay, okay. All righty, there are no presentations of any special recognitions or awards this evening. There are no appointments before the board that are scheduled. We do have two public hearings. The first is a public hearing to consider a request in regard to a text amendment to the Land Development Code, the airport overlay. We had a presentation on this at our last meeting. Does anybody have any questions or comments about that? Our second public hearing is to consider an economic development incentive for Project Paragon, and we'll have our IEDC reps here to present that at 7 o'clock.
Correct.
Move on to administrative matters appropriate for inclusion in a consent agenda, and Ms. Maul, if you'd please tee those up for us.
Absolutely, thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was a request from Iredell State's Full Schools for approval to transfer money between capital line items, and Mr. Latt is here to make this presentation, and Ms. Cheek is here as well to answer any questions.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
How you doing?
What we're looking at is we got, we can't move but 10% of this money, so was what we're doing just coming in, just giving y'all information to where we need to move this 2.1 out of the computer line over to our annual renovations where we can do some of our summer projects and get those off to, off of our books, but also get the kids back in some of these schools that need to be in them.
Okay, any questions concerning the request to move this, transfer this intra-budget transfer from the computer line item, technology line item, to the enumerated purposes?
No question.
Okay, good to go.
Good.
Consent?
Consent.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harper.
The next item is a request from ICATS for approval of purchase in auto renewing contract, and Mr. Bradley Johnson is here to make this presentation to the board.
Tonight, we come before you with the request for the auto renew scheduling software. This will be replacing our system that we've had in place for 19 years now. We've been with Route Match, the same vendor, but the request here is to go with a new vendor called Echolane. They are a lot more customer friendly, user, end-user satisfaction is one of the key things that helped us in making the decision, but we're also looking at the advantages of on-time performance and your passengers per hour. This uses the, an algorithm in there that automatically schedules or changes your schedule throughout the day. Right now, we have about 75 cancellations a day. We are going ahead and scheduling those trips the night before, and when those cancellations happen, then now we just have gaps in our schedule. This software here will continuously make changes throughout your day so that if we have an afternoon part-time driver that we might be able to say, we don't need you to come into work today, and be able to be more efficient in our passengers per hour. We put out the RFP with the help of procurement, and we had eight responses. We went through the eight responders, and we interviewed three of the top three, and then we had an evaluation committee, and then we all unanimously chose Echolane as the number one. And we, originally, we did not look at price, we only looked at the product that they had offered, and then, once we had a number one selection of the offering, then we opened the prices, and still, Echolane was still a very competitive choice, and so that's the one we would like to go with. We had the contract, their normal contract is for five years, but we wanted it with a one year with an auto renew, because if, if they're not living up to the things that they promised in this contract, then we would like to be able to get out of there and see where we needed to go.
We've been there before on that.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for Bradley?
And you said our last software lasted 19 years?
Yeah, we've been with them for 19 years, so there's, there's, you know, there is a maintenance fee that you pay, you know, for every year, but that includes updates and different things. This here, it has the, you know, your initial investment is the 171, but then, you know, $57,000 a year in maintenance and technical support. That handles all of our call reminders as well, so it does a night before call where they can confirm or cancel their trip, but then it also does a call 15 minutes before the van should get there. So it's, that really helps with your, your no-shows at the fact, so that, that's included in that $57,000. It also does text messaging, which is something that we've, we've found out that with our current software, it cannot do text messaging. A lot of our clientele don't have minutes on their phone to, they're not going to want to answer the phone to confirm or deny, but with a text message, they can, you know, reply back one or two to cancel or confirm their trip. So that's, that's some of the benefits. It also has a portal where DSS will be able to put in their own trips, you know, so we won't have to be getting a spreadsheet from DSS and then manually entering all those trips. DSS can enter their trips directly into this portal, which should save significant manhours on our side as well. We can do that with any other third party, you know, that, that schedule a lot of trips. DSS, Council on Aging, those are the only two that actually schedule probably enough trips to make that training worthwhile, but, you know, we have that availability to do that for any, any other agencies that would like it as well.
So if we approve this, you can't leave for 10 more years?
I don't think I have any contract in here.
19.
19, I'm sorry, 19 years.
The last software.
That's fine.
And I see that they've got 24/7 service support.
They do, and I've tried it out multiple times, just calling their technical support, and you actually do get a person every time, which is something that with our current software, you might be on hold for two hours, and then, you know, automatically it'll just put you to a voicemail and you never actually speak to someone.
So how many different, you mentioned the, the customer service input that you got from other users, how many did you contact?
We contacted, well, we contacted Ohio, the state of Ohio, which they, they purchased this software for all of the public transportation vendors there. We know two or three individuals at different systems in Ohio, we talked to them. We also talked to Orange County, they recently went with this, Durham has recently went with this, some of the ones in South Carolina, I think both Beaufort, Beaufort, South Carolina. So we, we talked to about 10 different individuals, and, you know, and then they have a lot of testimonials on their website as well.
Do you anticipate any glitches or struggles transitioning?
We, we have been doing everything we can to, because we know that if you put bad data in, you're going to get bad data out. One of the things we've been working on over the last, really, two or three weeks since we made this selection was taking all of our data and going through it and cleaning it up. We had 190,000 addresses in there that weren't personal addresses, but that were like places of business that have been put in over the last 19 years, so going through and removing all those, I know like Eckers and Roses and some of these ones, I mean, you know, that are pretty easy to, you know, to realize that they're not only in business, but we have been verifying all of them that they are legitimate and updating their contact information for that business as well. So we have really, really done good, a lot of hard work on the back end trying to get good data to be able to put in. We, we don't think there will be any glitches, I mean, they, they've been doing go-lives during COVID with them not on site, but now with the restrictions being lifted, I believe they are going to come on site to do our go-live.
Okay.
And we hope to be able to go live before July 1, so that we can be ready for our Medicaid transformation as well.
How long is that transition process?
They said they've done it in as little as three weeks, but they, you know, they said they have some systems that it takes up to a year. They said it's really just custom, the system driven, like as, as we can provide the information to them, then they can get it, you know, put in. One of the things in the RFP was that we wanted to make sure that all of the systems who did, or all of the contractors that did imports, they went back and verified that data too, to make sure that they're not getting bad data. One of the things we had was one of the test systems that submitted was that they had their address down, as the state was Iredell, was so known of our geo-coding work, and so we would have to go in and redo all of those addresses. So, you know, they have a team of, of like data experts, I guess, that will go through and validate all of the information isn't incorrectly, so, so that's the biggest thing. If we give them bad data, it's going to take a lot longer, but if, you know, if we give them good data, it should be a pretty, pretty fast process.
Have you talked to anybody that had your old software that transitioned to this software?
We have, we, there was, there was about six or seven different ones on their testimonial, and we reached out to two or three of them, and, because it goes from like their, your rides per hour, what they were able to go from like 1.6 rides per hour to maybe 2.4 or something. And so we did reach out to some of those, those on there just to make sure that was legitimate data, not just marketing. And one of the good, good things is that one of the engineers for Echolane was a previous data analysis at Route Match, so he knows where to get all of that stuff out of the tables, if it's not something that we can pull out of just, you know, out of the user interface on the front end.
Sounds like you've done your homework.
I was going to say, what, what do you need us for?
Multi-year.
But I have to say, you are the kind of person that makes the county work better and make best job easier, because without you, I mean, you've got it all down pat, and that's my hands, my plow is to you, I'm telling you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you, Bradley.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Emergency Medical Services for approval of a sole source award to Sage Security Solutions to install an integrated access control system, and Ms. Blair Ritchie is here to make this presentation.
Afternoon. Every year, we are charged with completing an annual compliance program review and risk assessment of our, of our services, and that is very important for our confidentiality and HIPAA requirements and CFR 42. So, and we also build on our previous year's assessment, we look for holes, look for opportunities there. And since we've moved into the public safety complex, we did, we were introduced to a similar like Sage security system that we have in this building, and the interaction of that and using it to manage kind of our access to our buildings and things like that has been very, very positive. So we, with our assessment this year, we took a step back and looked at all of our outlying bases, and we have various means of securing access in and out of our bases, and we really thought it was the best practice for us to move to the same system at all of our outlying bases. So this system, and when we did move to the public safety complex, we went ahead and purchased a license, and so we had already made some, you know, an investment into the system, embedded the system, so we are just requesting a sole source award of 48,800 so we can extend all of those out, extend all of that out to our outlying bases, so.
Right there.
I'm sure, my cell phone's in my pocket, so.
I would just note that this system works off the employee ID badges, much, just like this system, so instead of having different keys for different facilities, all they have to have is their badge, and that's their key. And as they rotate staff from one base to another, they don't have to keep up with different keys and make sure they have the right key for whatever base they're working at that day. So it does make things a little easier for staff, it certainly makes things a lot easier to manage when we, when we do have staff members that, that leave or retire, things like that, trying to make sure we get all the keys and all that stuff, it's all just with a click of a mouse.
It is, it's instantaneous. Right now, we have seven different systems, and it's just not, not as efficient as we need it to be.
Any questions for Blair? Comments? Consent?
Consent. Ms. Ritchie also has the next item, which is a request from Emergency Medical Services for approval, I'm so sorry. Yes, I apologize. He did. He did. Sorry, Mr. Norman. The next item is a request from Emergency Medical Services for approval of Budget Amendment Number 45, and to allocate donated, donated funds towards our community response support team efforts within Iredell County. Ms. Ritchie?
So we have been so fortunate to receive another donation from the Cecil G. Ebert Foundation. We received a similar donation about a year ago from this foundation, and I think that we have proven that we use the funds wisely, and we want to continue those efforts in the community. So as you guys know, in 2019, we started our Community Response Support Team Program with our peer support specialists. With these funds, 30,000, we would like to put into a line that allows us to work with nonprofits in the community to provide services to our clients that we can't directly provide. So, you know, it may be assistance with the utility bill, or purchasing an ID, or small things like that, but we are able to work very closely with a nonprofit such as Iredell Christian Ministries with these funds. And so with these funds, we will funnel that straight to the nonprofits in the community to help. The 6,000 is actually, we are still, we have a software picked out, but we don't quite have the funds for it, and so we're, you know, she questioned what we needed in our service, and one thing we're looking for is that software that will help us judge program impact. And so that 6,000 is an investment into that software. We do have upcoming grant funds that will fulfill the rest of the, the software cost, and so that impact of that program that we're looking at will be able to judge the impact in our community with our peer support program as well as our community paramedic program. So we're really excited about that. It helps us to monitor and manage how we link resources in the community if it was successful, and just kind of keep up with that interaction so we can give better reports and show what we're truly doing.
Any questions on this item? Those are some great grants to, consent?
Consent.
Thank you, Marvin.
Thank you. The next item is also presented by Ms. Ritchie, and this is a request from Emergency Medical Services to proclaim May 16 through the 22 of 2021 as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Thank you. So fortunately, we've made it to another year of EMS Week, and this year, the, the theme is, this is EMS caring for, for our communities, and I think we have certainly done that in the last year, even with some volume changes with COVID-19 and the effects of that. In the last year, we responded to 33,853 calls between our non-emergency division and our emergency division.
I'd like to pull this out for our 7 o'clock, so we can read the full proclamation and adopt the resolution.
Absolutely.
At that time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Blair.
The next item is a request from Tax Administration for approval of April 2021 refunds and releases, and there are no commissioner names on this list.
Any questions or comments? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
The final item for the board is Partners Behavioral Health. Mr. Norman, Commissioner Norman has been serving on that board, and he has fulfilled two three-year terms, thank you, Mr. Norman, for that service, and as required by their bylaws, has to have a one-year lapse in service, so he can no longer serve, there has to be a one-year lapse, so this is a commissioner, a request for a commissioner assignment for that Partners Behavioral Health Board, or a designee if the board wishes.
Is there someone that would volunteer? Because we're not going to voluntold you, but.
I think I got volunteered from Marvin, and, but, but our agreement is I do it one year and then he takes it back. Right, Marvin?
We will then, for consent, with Marvin's lead on that, do the rest of us consent to Commissioner Brown being appointed to a term to the Partners Behavioral Board of Directors? Consent?
Yeah.
All right. That takes us to Item 10, Announcements of Vacancies Occurring on Boards and Commissions, which is the semi-annual mother lode of, so if you'd like to review those.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. We do have three announcements for the Farmland Preservation Advisory Board, one announcement for I Care Board of Directors, two announcements on the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority, one announcement for Jury Commission, one announcement for Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one announcement for the Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees, two announcements for the Mooresville Planning Board ETJ Representation, one announcement for State's Full Board of Adjustment ETJ Representation, one announcement for State's Full Planning Board ETJ, and finally, one announcement for Troutman Planning Board ETJ.
Could you share where these are posted on our website?
Yes.
For application purposes.
Absolutely. If you will go to the Iredell County website, and you go under Boards and Commissions, then you can read about those boards, and you can also receive the application. If you choose not to do that, then you can contact Ms. Amy Anderson, and she can get you an application.
And we'll, of course, go through all that once again at 7 o'clock.
Yes, sir.
There are no appointments to Boards or Commissions this evening. No unfinished business will be budget-related to put the last finishing touches on that to the extent we can, and then we won't have to call for a public hearing that is just going to be noticed for our next meeting. This will be a public comment period, no new business that I'm aware of. And the County Manager's report, you have a preview?
Absolutely, thank you. Just to let everyone know that as a result of the governor's announcement on Friday, Iredell County, of course, has followed suit, and we are continuing to follow the Center for Disease for Disease Control guidelines and Governor Cooper's executive order, which lifted all mandatory, and you'll see that we have more people up here on the dais, but we, that order lifted all mandatory capacity and gathering limits, social distancing requirements, and most mandatory mask requirements. If, if you recall, the, the county and Chairman Mallory did an addendum to our state of emergency proclamation back in the height of COVID regarding masking at county facilities. That was lifted as of Friday evening, the 14th, at midnight. However, we have not done a press release because we do still have some departments that are required for masking. They're required to, to mask. And for example, ICATS, we talked about ICATS in public transportation, they're required to continue mandatory masking. Health Department, because they are a healthcare provider, our employee health clinic, facilities like that. So what we will be doing, each of those facilities that provide those services where masking is still mandatory, they will have a notice on the entrance of those facilities letting individuals in the public when they come to those facilities or when they receive their services that masking is required. And those facilities where masking is, is no longer required per the order and the CDC guidelines, we will remove those notices because right now, all of those notices are on all of our entrances of our facilities. So that is something that, that we're, we're moving through the process of doing that. But I just want to make sure everybody understands, there are some county facilities where masking is still required based on the services that that facility provides per, per the executive order. One thing as a follow-up, what we were talking about earlier, is a follow-up from our budget workshops. We talked a little bit about our ARP, American Recovery Program funds that are, that are COVID-related funds. And we had presented to the board some ideas or thoughts on how those funds can be spent. Participated in a webinar yesterday, and the, the loose guidelines and instructions for those funds are not as loose as initially told. So the list that we had provided to the board regarding things that we could do with those funding, based on the feedback that we received yesterday, only one of those items on that list would be allowable. So I say all that to say, please shred that list, and we will go back to the drawing board based on the new directive and guidance and guidelines that we had received, and we will, we will prepare an additional list. The board had talked at the budget workshop about submitting ideas for that list. Please make sure that you do that and submit that so we can go through the vetting process to see if any of those meets the criteria for the use of those funds.
If you could send us all the criteria.
I will. What we had received and what was spelled out to us was, was very loose. When we actually participated in, in the webinar and participated in that, the Q and A was very informative, and we realized at that point that a lot of those things were not allowable. But I'll be more than happy to send those out. It's pretty much the same thing that I had sent out last week in my update, but I will send that, send some more detailed guidance out. And then if you have any ideas, please make sure you submit those to us so we can get that on the list. Also, the, the board, we had talked about doing a market study. This is, this upcoming year is the year that we'll be doing our, our market study for salaries for employees. And we had talked about the board-approved list. I have given you a piece of paper on the dais here with a list of, it's just a one-pager with a list of governmental entities. The list that we use as a comparable, it's a board-approved list, and this list was updated when we did the elected official salary study two years ago. I think it was about two, I think it was 2019. So this was the updated list that we used that was board-approved. I would ask the board to review this list, and if there are any that you would like to see changed or added, please let me know, and we can get board approval. The reason this is important is because we're, we're starting that process, trying to get into the schedule for this market analysis and reviewing the contract for that. And these are, these are, these are the ones that we would submit as a comparable. So if there are any changes, please let me know. One other follow-up item from the workshop is we had discussed the idea of including permanent part-time employees in our annual performance review process. And doing that and also including the permanent part-time in the merit, if a merit is, if merit is approved in the budget. So I need some, some guidance from the board if that is the direction that you would like to go. The reason that is critical is because we have to notify those department directors. That's a change in how we normally operate because we typically don't do annual performance reviews for the permanent part-time. So that will be a new practice. And we want to make sure that, starting July 1, if there are any employees that fall in that early anniversary date of July, that they do not miss out on that, that merit increase, if that's the board's wishes. One other thing that I do need to update the board on, if you recall, we started a call center that was located at the Public Safety Center in our EOC to handle the, the COVID-related calls and take some of the pressure and heat off of the Health Department. Now that we are scheduling those appointments and a lot of the, we've had so much information out there, we're not seeing the magnitude of calls that we have seen in the past. We do see a benefit in continuing the call center, but what we are doing is, based on the call volume, we are going to, we haven't, we haven't needed as many staff manning the phones as we originally had in the height of it. So we're down to two staff members that are manning the call center, and we're relocating it to the Health Department. So, so that will free up, back the EOC so we can continue to use that for other purposes. So as of tomorrow, the call center will be housed at the Health Department, and we'll have two, two staff members that will be managing the call center and handling those calls. Because quite frankly, a lot of the Q and A is Health Department-related, so we're just trying to put it all back at the Health Department now that we're, it's more manageable.
And those staff members are Health Department employees?
No. Actually, those staff members are actually temporary employees that we brought on board to help us with the call center, to help, to help manage the calls. And we're using CARES Act funds to pay for those temporary employees. So we still have two temps. We were also using some, some staff members from other departments that we had pulled from other departments. So now that things are, I hate to use the term getting back to normal, but now that things are ramping up, we're sending those staff members that we pulled from other departments back to those departments, and we're keeping the two temporary employees to man that call
So at what time do we need to make the decision on any of the budget items? You know, we're noticing it out for two weeks from now.
The, the public hearing would be on January the 1st for our budget, our budget public I mean, we typically give for the, for the part-time and the annual performance reviews, those that have an anniversary date in July, those performance reviews need to, need to occur in June. So I really need to get notices out by the end of May for those.
For that budget ordinance that's going to be presented at the public hearing for us to vote on, or?
To get all the numbers finalized and everything. As far as these things that are budget-related impacted, probably by the first of next week. We'd probably need to do that and rebalance the budget with some of those changes because this one right now is not one that's included in the budget. And then we can get that back to the board and tell you what the numbers are, and then you can make the final decision. But we'll need kind of a nod to go ahead and rebalance and include that.
Okay, so we'll handle that individually.
Okay.
Do any commissioners have questions about the budget, budget process, just, you know, as, as we're going forward? The public hearing, we've had that before and voted the very, that very night. And then that puts the budget to bed, and, and they can be moving forward. But if there's any hanging chads from our budget workshop, you know, we need to resolve those pretty quickly so that when, when it all comes before us, it's not the first time we're looking at any kind of changes.
Correct.
So you're going to nugget out the additional, the numbers, particularly in relates to, for instance, if there are any kind of costs, well, there will be costs to proposed signing bonuses or.
Yes.
You know, retention programs or, or whatever's going to go in the pot to help in those regards. You're going to put some numbers on that and then let us know what those are.
Correct. And if you recall, the, the sign-on bonuses was one of the ideas that we had floated to use ARP funds for. And based on the guidance that we received, do not believe that that's an allowable expenditure. We're, but we, but we think that we might be able to go back with a different explanation because it, it is for essential workers, and we think we might have some leverage with that. But we've just got to get additional clarification on some of these rules and guidelines. But we're working to do that. We're working to try to figure out what money we can use for which purpose and make sure that, that what we're doing is appropriate for the use of those funds. But I will say, if that is something that, that the board would like to do, and I, I gathered from the workshop that, that the sign-on bonus piece was something the board was interested in doing, if we cannot use ARP funds, I guess my question to the board would be, would you like us to find a way to, to continue to include it in the budget, even if we cannot use those funds for that?
Yeah, and that's the point. We need to know what the dollar figure is for that.
But couldn't we find a place for ARP money and take away money that we were going to use to put back for signing?
And, and those are the things that we're working on now.
You know, we, we, we consented basically for the two and a half across and up to three. I guess what we need to do is get numbers from you, from proposals from staff as to what we didn't really specifically talk about, like some numbers for sign-on bonuses and some of that stuff you'd like to maybe look at, because we didn't really get into the details on that.
I believe we handed out a spreadsheet, but that was over, that was through 2024. So for sign-on bonuses, we had, we had allocated some funds for the, for the life of the ARP funds, which went through 2024. That's probably not viable now, so I'll go back and get that.
Did y'all talk about in our webinar for NCACC, did y'all talk about trying to figure out a way to ask for an extension of, or, or a way to allocate if these, if the funds that are allocated to us, if we can earmark them per se? Because, you know, with everybody trying to do the construction, there's just no way, I think, the schools, the counties, the cities can get this stuff done by 2024. So we've got to figure out to try to get legislation done for a, you know, technical adjustment. As the chairman and I talked about, that's a major concern for everyone. Did they talk about that in y'all's?
We were told no capital projects. We were told the only infrastructure that you can use ARP funds for is water, sewer, and broadband. No capital projects.
Really?
That's what, that's what we were told. However, there is a caveat where, and I'm looking at Ms. Cheek because she can probably help me with some of this, but we think we may be able to justify one of those things with that, was a Health Department facility. There, there is a category for public health, and we think we, we may be able to justify something like that. But as far as some of the other things that we had talked about regarding capital facilities, things like that, we don't believe that that's going to be an allowable expenditure.
Specifically about schools, because we had several people talking about school capital.
They did mention this afternoon that schools, they would be much more allowable with that.
Right.
They've already made the determination that if you enter into a construction project, if it's eligible, that you have until 2026 to complete those.
Complete it.
Yes, they do.
Because I know we talked, we were just mentioning the concerns on the timetable and the shortage of contractors and cost of construction materials, that kind of thing. So I think if we can get some type of, some of these things may be allowable by waiver or, or send in specific questions like you're talking about for clarification. But one of the things I wanted to ask about too, as far as the pay, can we use the ARP money if we wanted to? Can you find out if we can use that for some of the shift differential stuff and?
What we can do, and what, what my understanding is, and I'm looking at Ms. Cheek again, but we can use it to provide pay for essential workers. And we have already identified that county staff are essential workers. So as you were saying, Commissioner Brown, we might be able to, if, if we can't do the sign-on bonuses or something like that to try to get people to work, maybe we could do the pay increase that you were referring to and then use that money to do. So we're, we're working on that, but that is a provision, pay for essential workers. And this board has already deemed that county staff are essential.
Don't we already have some money set aside for the Health Department from?
We have.
Mad Max money.
Mad Max funds are funds that we have been setting aside for that. It's not enough to do that. But again, we think we might have some wiggle room on that one because it is a public health facility.
Possibly, but you have to tie it to the actual dealing with COVID. So they were very much on the proportionable reasonableness of it. And then they even gave the example, you can't go build a new three-story building because you're trying to mitigate COVID. So, but we may be able to pay for a portion of it.
Especially if we're doing vaccinations there now and things of that nature.
Can Mad Max money be used, you know, like if you borrowed money, let's say, to do that project and not use ARP money? Can future Mad Max money pay that debt service or would it support, with what we've got coming in, would it support a payment for the part we were going to use for, from ARP money?
I'll have to do some research on that as far as if it can be used for debt. I know ARP cannot be used for debt. They were very clear on that.
What I was referring to is, don't we already have some money set aside to build the new Health Department?
We have some, but it's not enough to do the whole thing.
It is, it is that.
Yeah.
It's not our money.
No. No, it's, it's purely the Mad Max funds that we're setting aside. And it's the same thing we've done for all of our, what we did for our jail. We saved and saved and saved until we had enough money to construct, and then we constructed. We're doing the same thing with the Mad Max funds for that facility.
Well, and to Commissioner House's point, specifically, if you borrow money, take what we've got, borrow money to build a facility.
Right.
Can future Mad Max funds be used to pay the debt service?
Right.
Because that's what it's going towards.
I'll find out, unless Ms. Robertson knows.
I think there is a possibility that there's no, out on those Mad Max funds will come, continue to come in. And we're dependent upon agreements with the state that pays to get that Medicaid money. And what the Medicaid max does, we receive during the year when services are provided, each time a service is built, we receive some portion. And then a couple of years later, they come in and audit, and depending on our cost, they maximize what our true costs were and send us more money for the program in which it was earned. That could get away tomorrow if change made in the state law.
Well, once we get, once we get the details of what we think we can do and some more clarification, that'll help.
I will say that one comment that, that was made several times was, think of this as CARES money plus. Everything that was eligible under CARES is still eligible, but not much past that.
And if you recall, CARES Act funding was very restrictive. We had to be very, very careful. It was very prescribed and very prescribed.
You know, this is not how this has been billed out of Congress. This was a stimulus bill.
Correct.
Okay? And you're not going to stimulate very much if you have it so tight that you can't use it except for, you know, salaries.
Well, like the counties don't have water and sewer, and they're letting the municipalities use it for broadband and water and sewer. And we could use the broadband piece, but there should be, I think, some flexibility on capital for counties because.
The focus of this and what they want you to use this money for is to push the money into your county. Push it to individuals, push it to businesses. That is the main point of this money.
Which, quite frankly, is.
To individuals?
It's, it's like a local stimulus as opposed to a federal stimulus.
Capital still helps that. It creates jobs, and I'm just saying it does it.
We agree with that argument, but that was not an acceptable argument.
Yeah.
Well, you know.
Well, you know. And let Gene sign for it. And if anybody goes jail, he goes.
Well, it, it would behoove us to do a study then or quickly figure out what areas of the county are not served by water system. Because there's areas in the northeast, you know, Eagle Mills and the, the nunnery up there that don't have water.
Correct.
What about then?
We have a lot of folks whose wells are going dry.
Towers. But a lot of those up there don't want, they want to stick with wells. But what about Love Valley?
I'm saying, yeah, you know, let's look at if, if, if these dollars can be used for putting in water systems, we have a need.
And we'll lose it, that's for sure.
Yeah. I mean, if, if it's.
Agreed.
Use it or lose it.
Right.
Let's take advantage of this opportunity because, because the market won't sustain, you know, the, the water companies go in and putting lines where there's just not enough soaked to, to serve. Okay. Thank you, Dan. You know, on the comps for here, there's just a couple that I know, you know, we've tried to look at our competitors and of course, Davie County is contiguous to us and they're not listed, neither is Wilkes. I don't think yet can compete much for us, but you know, it's a, you have a fair number of people that come here from Wilkes or that go the other way.
Okay. So add those two?
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay.
Are we looking at municipality stuff for specific job titles or why would we not look at just counties compared to us? What's the, remind me of what?
Well, this is really what we're looking at for competition, who we lose people to. So for example, I'm going to use finance because Ms. Cheek was here. Municipalities have finance departments as well. Municipalities have law enforcement officers as well. So they don't have detention officers because municipalities don't have jails, but they do have, you know, law enforcement officers.
Between the two, we should be covered.
Yes. So that's kind of why we use a mix.
Yeah.
You know, municipalities have parks and recreation departments. They have, you know, things of that nature. They have planning and zoning. They have things. So while, for example, detention centers, that would just be county and state. But for other departments, there are equivalents in municipalities as well.
What was the feedback we got last time specifically from, I think the sheriff mentioned some of the specific counties he didn't see. Was there, was that addressed as far as the comparison? I don't remember the details.
Those are.
They're still covered in that?
This list was, was inclusive of his concerns.
I got you. Okay.
Because this is the list that we use for the elected official salary study.
Got you. That's the latest list.
This is the latest list.
Got you.
Correct. And we can certainly add those two, Chairman Mallory.
Okay.
What, I'm sorry, but this, is this something that the board would like to approve or do you want to continue to look at it?
Is there, shall we put this on our consent agenda or do you want to have further discussions or?
I'm good with adding your.
You said you added two or three?
Added Davie and.
Davie and Wilkes.
The other one?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, since I didn't get this list, Chairman Mallory, I mean, Commissioner Norman, I apologize. You don't have this list, but is it okay if I read these out?
Sure.
For Mr. Norman's benefit as well. On the list for comparables for the market study, we have Alamance County, Alexander County, Cabarrus County, Catawba County, Davidson County, Forsyth County, Gaston County, Johnston County, Lincoln County, Mecklenburg County, Orange County, Rowan County, Union County, and we've just added Davie County and Wilkes County. We also have City of Charlotte, City of Concord, City of Hickory, Town of Mooresville, City of Salisbury, City of Statesville, City of Winston-Salem, and the State of North Carolina.
Davie and Wilkes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, is there agreement? Is there a motion if, say, to put this on our administrative matter and have a consent?
Number eight, consent.
Okay, consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Okay, Marvin, waiting on your consent to add those comps for the salary study. Marvin, did you hear? We're just waiting on your consent to add all those counties into our, and.
I'm getting those.
Okay, thank you. Right, that would be item eight then. Okay. All right. At this time, we will go into a closed session for attorney-client discussions pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection 83 on several matters to include the litigation by Christopher A. Skip McCall et al. versus the Board of Commissioners. Okay.